Okay. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for the city of Santa Barbara for Thursday, December 3, 2009. We'll begin with the roll call. Ms. Rodriguez, please.
Commissioner White. Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Justice.
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs.
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
Chair Larson.
Here. Thank you very much. Our preliminary matters. Any requests for continuances, withdrawals, et cetera?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any announcements or appeals?
No.
No, all right. At this time, I'll open public comment. Anybody from the public may come up and address us for two minutes on anything not on today's agenda. So if you want to come up and talk about Christmas lights on State Street, or your neighbor, any of that, come on up. No? Okay. Seeing that, I'll close public comment. I will say, though, for just a reminder, if you do wish to make public comment on any item that is on the agenda, please pick up a green slip now. It'll make it easier for later. And fill it out, and then give it to Danny here at the front, and then we'll be prepared when your item is up. I also ask that you turn off all electronic devices. Jabons, everything. Because, you know, we either want you to buy us pizza, or give them to staff till the end of the meeting, which would be such a drag. So, all right. Our first item of business, then, would be a consent item. And that would be for 1927 El Camino de la Luz.
Mr. Justice.
I move we waive the reading of the staff report on this item.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Staff report is waived. And any public comment on this item? We'll open public comment. We have received written comment on this item, which we received by email through the staff. Two, a couple of letters. One from Thomas Felkay, and do I have the other? Yes, Leslie Wiscombe. And they are both, they are both in favor of the project. All right. Any discussion from the commission? Pardon?
The applicant.
Oh, do you wish to come forward, the applicant, at this time?
If you like us there.
If you wish. Come up to the microphone and say whether you want to talk or not. You can say, "That's all right. We don't need to say a thing." Or you're welcome to say something.
Good applicant. My name's Chris D'Amico, and I have nothing to say.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. So to the commission.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Lodge.
This is a correction of an unpermitted addition that was made many years ago, and properly conforming to city requirements. And so I would move to approve the project.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have discussion. Here I am zooming along. Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question, since we didn't have staff report. Obviously, there's a replacement structure that is going to take place where the old illegal addition had been located. But the foundations that are being reused were never permitted. Can somebody elaborate on that? Or are they being legalized? It says they weren't being replaced, but if it was never permitted in the first place, I'm trying to understand how they can be reused.
Ms. Broaddus, or Danny?
Chair Larson and Commissioners, in the DART process, we did have this routed through the Building and Safety Department, and they found that it was satisfactory.
Okay.
So that will be permitted in this process, then?
Yes.
And legalized?
The foundation will be included as.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
I just have one regarding the rock wall. And that is, I know that the neighbor's wall is not going to be dressed in rock on the other side, but I would ask that the construction be done as neatly as possible for the sake of the neighbor, in case they ever did wish to do something with that. So they're not looking at the ugly side of a cinder block wall. All right.
And then, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Call the question? You're going to make a motion?
We already have one.
Okay. Okay. That's why I was wondering why there was a hesitation. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You have a nice project. And this is appealable within 10 days to City Council. And we have your plans for you to take away if you wish.
I think you need to keep one there, Julie.
You need one standing.
Yeah. Oh, there she has that one there?
Yeah. All right. Our next item of consideration is a new item for 825 De La Vina Street, and this is for a condo project. So we'll have a presentation from staff. Thank you, Ms. Broaddus. It's your busy day.
Good afternoon. Yeah. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The proposal before you this afternoon is a request for a mixed-use development consisting of seven residential units and approximately 700 square feet of commercial space on a 14,750-square-foot lot located at 825 De La Vina Street. The project site is located between Cannon Perdito and De La Guerra Streets, as shown on this slide, and it's situated two blocks to the south of State Street and one block to the east of Correo Street. The lot is currently developed with a paved parking lot with parking spaces rented on a month-to-month basis. Here's a slide showing the zoning map. The site is zoned C2, Commercial Zone, and the general plan land use designation is residential 12 units per acre and general commerce. You can see the surrounding area is also generally C2 with R3 zone adjacent facing on Bass Street. Let's see. The neighborhood is developed with a mix of office, residential, and commercial uses. There are also many types of architectural styles, residential densities, and various uses. The proposal consists of seven residential condominiums, as I stated, within two three-story buildings at a maximum height of 31 feet 3 inches. Three of the condos will have an attached live-work office space on the first floor. The third-story portions of the building consist of one bedroom for six of those units and private south-facing decks. The proposal is comprised of three two-bedrooms and four one-bedroom units. Each of the two bedrooms would have a small attached office space ranging in size from 200 feet to about 250 feet. In total, there's three commercial office spaces. The residential unit sizes range from 780 feet for the smallest unit and 1,700 square feet for the largest unit. Seven vertically tandem parking garages, along with two guest and three commercial parking spaces, are being provided, and approximately 500 cubic yards of grading is proposed. The applications required for this project are tentative subdivision map to create the condominium units and a modification for rear yard setback encroachment. In the C2 zone on lots adjacent to residentially zoned parcels, the required setback is 10 feet or half the building height, whichever is greater. This proposed building will be 31 feet in height, and therefore, the required setback at the rear of the property would be 16 feet. The applicant is requesting a 10-foot setback at the rear of the lot for the first and second stories. Also, in the R3, R4 zones, the setbacks are 6 feet for the ground floor and 10 feet for the second and third floor. The intent of the increased setbacks in the C2 zone lots where they abut residentially zoned properties is to keep residential uses separate and away from the commercial uses. Therefore, this would prevent any noise, customers, cars that would normally be associated with commercial uses from disrupting the adjacent residential uses. The project is providing three small commercial office spaces that will be used as live-work units. The spaces will be low intensity, and the spaces are situated toward the middle and rear of the lot, creating a separation from the adjacent homes along Bass Street. Staff is supportive of this modification because it meets the intent of the ordinance and keeps the commercial spaces away from the adjacent homes. Additionally, the building exceeds the setbacks of the R3, R4 zone by providing a 10-foot setback on the first and second stories and a 28-foot 3-inch setback on the third floor. The project went to Architectural Board of Review on four occasions. At the first two meetings of March 18 and July 28, 2008, the project consisted of eight units within two larger buildings. A central driveway was situated between two three-story buildings on both sides of the lot. The applicant was asked to re-study the site layout in relation to setbacks, the adjacent buildings, neighborhood context, and provide additional landscaping. The board was not in support of that centered driveway between the two three-story buildings. On January 12, the project returned with a revised site design, and the proposal consisted of two main buildings along the northwest side of the property and a driveway along the southeast side of the property. The board stated their appreciation of this revised site layout and stated that the mass bulk and scale had improved. Again, on November 16, the project was reviewed by the ABR fourth time. The board supported the overall site design and found it compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant was asked to re-study some elements of the roof and the driveway and to provide additional landscaping opportunities in the front of the property. The board supported the rear setback modification and forwarded the project onto the Planning As you saw at the site visit on Tuesday, story poles were installed at the site to give a representation of the proposed height and scale of the building, and here's a slide showing that. This project was also reviewed for compliance with the land use element and the general plan, and is consistent with the west downtown neighborhood of the city of Santa Barbara. Therefore, with the approval of the modification, the proposed subdivision is in compliance with the applicable zoning ordinance requirements, and is consistent with applicable general plan policies. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the modification required for the rear setback encroachment and the tentative subdivision map, making the findings in the staff report subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. We have received, I believe, two letters of concern on this project, which have been forwarded to you for your review. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to make a presentation, please? Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Keith Rivera, representing Project 825 De La Vina Street. We're happy to present the project today. We feel like we strove to provide a balanced and reasonable project that would be of benefit to the community.
Just speak up a little bit. Is that better?
Is it on?
There.
Try that.
How's this? There we go.
Much better.
Okay. So, again, Keith Rivera, representing 825 De La Vina Street. If we could look at the first slide, please. As Kelly pointed out, the site's located mid-block here on De La Vina, just below Cannon Perdito. And you can see from this slide that it's a kind of an ideal location for a infill downtown housing. We have transit right along the street and adjacent, which are the red dots there. You're two blocks to walking to grocery shopping, two blocks to downtown shopping and business along State Street, and you're in close proximity to the MTD station. So as far as utilizing the existing infrastructure and resources of downtown, this seems like a really great spot. And next slide. As Kelly pointed out, the site here is on the edge of the C2 zone where it abuts the R3, R4 residential. So this edge condition is really a transitional position, and our feeling was that whatever development occurred there had to respect that edge and that transition between the two zones. Next slide, please. And that transition's apparent here in this aerial. You can see the scale of the buildings as we move back from State Street, Chapala, and then De La Vina, and then towards Bass, that the urban grain and the scale goes from the larger commercial to the kind of residential mix of multifamily and smaller residential structures to the southwest there. So again, that idea of this transition and that the project needs to reflect this condition in its design. Next slide, please. So here's the neighborhood. Along the top here, we have our side of the project with De La Vina Street, the site here, as Kelly pointed out, a barren parking lot. And the neighborhood really reflects this idea of this edge condition and this transition in that it's very much a mixture of varied uses and architectural scales and styles. So, you know, we have larger office buildings in the neighborhood. We have kind of smaller, older, mixed-use structures. We have small commercial buildings. We have our residential neighbor behind us to the west. So it really is kind of a mixed bag of a whole variety of different uses and scales. Next, please. And so here's our site that you saw the other day at the site visit. So again, we have this rather barren parking lot, large commercial building to the north with a rather large expanse of blank property line wall, matured street trees right at the corner of the property, and then some mature eucalyptus at the rear of the property. So there's a number of factors at play here. Next slide. And this slide tries to represent some of the different forces at play on the site and the different parameters that we're dealing with. So again, the building to our north, it's close up to the sidewalk. We have a large expanse of zero lot line wall, and we, our neighbor has these existing light wells that we don't want to block. We want to keep those open and functional. At the other end of our site here, we have kind of the opposite condition. We have a smaller scale structure set well back from the street. It has some rear buildings that are right on the property line that are one-story. We don't want to crowd those. The site also has this grouping of mature trees here in this corner. Some are along the street. Some are, like the pine here is our neighbor's tree right close by. We want to keep our distance from those, not compromise those. Those trees here, particularly in this location, start to limit where we can access the site to, because of course, if we get our curb cut any, you know, too close to those, then that's an issue. We have the mature yuks at the rear that, again, we want to maintain and preserve. And then we're abutting our residential neighbor, which we'd want to respect. They have their private open space in this rear yard area here. And then last but not least is the lot width, the 65-foot width, as was reflected in the earlier schemes with a double-loaded circulation system on the site. It's just too narrow for that. That type of double-loaded circulation pushes all the mass to the perimeter, and it's just not acceptable to the scale of the neighborhood. So those are kind of all the kind of site factors that we're trying to balance here. Next, please. And so this is the response to those factors. So what we did is we took the program and we broke it up into two smaller buildings. And we did that to create open spaces adjacent to our neighbor's light wells, to keep those free and clear and operable. The other thing that we did was we took a string line from the corner of our neighbor's setbacks, and we placed our building behind that to create an urban transition down the street that respects and mediates between the two buildings as far as their presence on the street. We accessed the site as close as possible to the mature trees without compromising them, and we've created a single-loaded circulation system along the southern edge that does a number of things. Creates an open space here that preserves the mature trees. It keeps our buildings and mass away from our smaller neighbors to the south, and it opens up our building to solar exposure. So we've justified all our mass to the north, where we're against the blank property line of this larger building here, and we have a commercial parking lot here. To the west, where we have our residential neighbor, we have all residential use here. We've matched their residential private open space with a residential private open space on grade here. So we're matching uses, and then that space here allows us to preserve that eucalyptus tree in that corner. Next slide, please. So here's the program. At the front, the first three units are the two-bedroom units, and again, these are between less than 1,500 square feet to just under 1,800 square feet. They each have an attached home office, which I'll get into in a moment. And then at the rear of the site, we have all our smaller one-bedroom units. So we have four units that range in size from 797 square feet to 975. So these aren't, you know, kind of bloated giant condos. Next slide. So this is a little detail of the home office use. So there's three of these. They're attached to the adjacent two-bedroom unit. They're dedicated in use only to the residents of that two-bedroom condominium. They cannot be sublet. They can't be subdivided, and they can't be used for any other use than office use by that owner. So the idea here is to create, on this edge of downtown, within walking distance of everything that's available in the downtown, a zero commute live-work opportunity that works within our present zoning ordinance. And as you all know, we don't have a live-work designation. So this is a means to provide that type of use in our community within our current rules. And this smaller proportion of commercial space seemed appropriate on that edge condition where we're transitioning into the residential neighborhood next door rather than a large amount of commercial space. Next, please. The residential private garages utilize a vertical tandem parking system. This reduces our building footprint and allows us to provide more open space and reduce the mass bulk and scale of the building. Next, please. And this is a little detail on that. This particular product is manufactured by a company called Harding Steel. They're a national company. They have these in operation all across the country. As a reminder, vertical lift tandem parking has been approved in the city previously at the Victoria Garden Muse project, which is currently under construction. We thoroughly reviewed the configuration with transportation. We went through a number of iterations of the parking design with them and looked at different equipment and chose this particular piece of equipment because it allowed for all, both cars to proceed into the space front end, whereas some systems require backing in and that kind of thing. This particular model is all electric. There's no hydraulics, so the operation is relatively quickly accommodated. And it also incorporates a whole number of safety features so that you, you know, obviously you don't want to squash the car down below or send your car through the roof, that kind of thing. So that's the parking lifts. Next, please. So here's our ground floor. Again, all the residential entries on grade. The two-bedrooms have a bedroom suite here on the northern edge, and then all the one-bedrooms have their garage, utility space, and entries on this level. Next, please. As we move up to the second floor, all the units have their common living spaces, so living, dining, kitchen at this level. We have south-facing decks for the two-bedrooms. Next. And so you can see that we vary the setbacks as we go up. We're continuing our open spaces as we proceed up in the building. We're staying back from our string line. We're maintaining some generous setbacks, and we're increasing the setbacks even more by varying the building. And then here at the west, adjacent to our residential neighbor, again, we have residential use. We have a 10-foot setback. And then the internal use of that end unit is all utility type of spaces, stairway, bathroom, that kind of thing on this edge. So there's minimal fenestration here to avoid any compromise of each other's privacy on that edge. Next. Here's the third floor. We have bedroom suites at this level. They've all, we've tried to minimize the floor area, minimize the mass at this level, and kept them all set back well from the edges. And, next slide, please. You'll notice here at this end unit, we've kept that unit a two-story unit so that we're matching the two-story mass for our neighbor here. You can see all the setbacks that we're providing at this level. Again, the open spaces continue up. We're moving back away here from our neighbor's existing property line window. And so at the third floor, we're set back 28 feet from our residential neighbor behind. Next. This is a section through the easternmost light well of our neighboring office building. And you can see how we've stepped our massing to maximize the light into his existing well. And you can see here that if you take the solar access criteria for an R3 zone coming up 18 feet going 30 degrees, our building envelope is below that. So we're trying to respect the use of that existing light well. Next. So now I'm going to go through a little exercise of the setbacks and first look at the C2 setbacks at the ground floor. So the red line indicates the setbacks per ordinance. So you can see, three sides, we're not required to have any setbacks, but yet you can see we've provided generous setbacks because we feel that's what the context in the neighborhood At the rear here, this is where we have our modification request. The ordinance reads we need a minimum of 10 feet or half our building height if we have a commercial or mixed-use building. Our building's just under 32 feet at the maximum height, so we're talking about a setback that would be required of approximately 16 feet. Again, this is all residential use here. Our commercial use doesn't start till midway into the site. Next. And this is comparing us to the required R3 setbacks. So you can see, we would, with the exception of our zero lot line neighbor here, where we're trying to mask up against the building, we would comply with and exceed, in many cases, the required R3 setbacks for the lot. Next. And this continues as we go up, up the building. So second level, again, the C2 setbacks, the red indicating the ordinance and the 10-foot what we're proposing. Next. And then the R3. So you can see, at this level, again, we're exceeding or meeting the R3 setbacks more often than not. Next. At the third level, I think this is where it really becomes important. You can see that at our rear property line per ordinance, we could have a three-story mass just 16 feet away from our residential neighbor. What we're proposing is this line back here, over 28 feet back. And then again, the other setbacks. And then, next slide. And again, the same exercise with the R3 zone. So you can see that at this upper level, with the exception of our zero lot line neighbor, we're meeting or exceeding even the R3 setbacks. Next. So this section is at the western property line. Here's our project. Here's our residential neighbor. The red line indicating the R3 setback, and the black line, the C2. So you can see, again, that we're meeting and exceeding the R3 setbacks where we have all residential use. We feel the benefit of our proposal is that we are providing a greater than, considerably greater than required setback at the third floor for our neighbor where it would count the most. We're matching residential use to residential use. And the benefit to the community is we have all those additional setbacks elsewhere on the project, at the rest of the perimeter, and particularly at the street. So we're not trying to max out the envelope in this scheme in any means. Next. Next. So architecturally, with the project, we've kind of taken Irving Gill's interpretation of California Spanish and Mission architecture as sort of our springboard, and his influence is seen around town with a number of buildings, and a number of these are right in the neighborhood. This is right on Bass Street, and this is nearby towards Chapala Street. Next, please. So this is a series of views coming down De La Vina. So here's our larger neighbor to the north, our smaller neighbor to the south. You can see how we've tucked our, the mass of our building up against the larger mass to the north. We're creating this urban transition with our setbacks. So we're stepping back, not only in plan, but then also in section, and we're creating this free space that preserves and gives those existing mature trees the room they deserve and kind of creates this transition down to our neighbor. Next. This is the view front on that, again, kind of accentuates that stepped massing to the south, how much space we're allowing here, and how we're kind of tucking up and hiding behind the mass to the north. Next. And then down the street, whereas you know from the site visit, the further you get down the street, you get the dense foliage of the street trees there that really start to obscure our project as you move down. Next. This is a close-up of the entry side at De La Vina, so we have a dedicated pedestrian entry that leads you to a pedestrian circulation system. Again, stepping the massing back from the street as well as to the south, and then embellishing it with some architectural detail. Next. This is a view of the rear building, so similar motif of the, of the massing and the stepping of the massing. You'll notice here at the one-bedrooms, at the west end of the property, the stepped massing obscures the third floor, preserving those existing yews. We have our common open space here. And again, architectural embellishments with overhangs, trellises, tile, giving the commercial office spaces a different presence architecturally with the larger arched openings. Next. So this is looking back towards De La Vina along our shared court where we have permeable paving with planted joints. We have a drainage system such that we're bringing everything down to our south property line, and we have a landscape bio-swell here that will deal with the water before it goes into a controlled inlet to the street. Next. So an overall view, giving you a feel for that stepped massing and the space we're providing along the street and the southern edge. Next. And to the rear, again, staying away from our smaller neighbors here, stopping our third floor well short of the property line, bringing our mass down with a lower eve line, minimal fenestration, again, matching residential use to residential use. Next. And then this is a view from the parking lot to the north end, just kind of accentuating that. So here, our third floor stops, we're dropping down, bringing our second floor down even more and matching the mass of our neighbor, and again, preserving those eucalyptus. Next, please. To look at it, the mass bulk and scale in kind of a quantitative manner, this is Mr. Mahan's elevation area ratio. So he's comparing the allowable vertical building envelope, which would be represented by the red dotted lines, against the actual area of the elevation, which would be the shaded area. So if we look at our street elevation, our maximum allowable envelope would be 3,900 square feet. Our actual is just over 1,000, so we end up with a ratio of .28. And if you go through the same exercise in the east-west direction, you end up with a ratio of about .36. And I believe with Mr. Mahan's description, anything below .4 is considered on the lower end of the scale. So again, we're not, we're not stretching the envelope here by any means, I don't think. Next. Landscape-wise, we have our landscape architect here who can answer any questions later, but again, preserving the existing trees, adding a new common open space in the center of the site adjacent to the light well, adding permeable paving.
About two more minutes.
Okay. Bio-swell function along the edge and 24% landscape coverage. Next. And again, this plays into the, the water quality. We're reducing the impervious area on the site. We're decreasing runoff, and we're controlling the flow where it goes to the street where none exists now. Next. Looking at it from a green building feature and comparing it with the lead-for-homes, these are all the kind of categories that we're intending to hit with the project.
Okay.
Last. So in conclusion, we feel that the size of the units are reasonable for downtown. The office spaces are creating opportunities for, for small local businesses. And that, again, if you look at the statistics with the FAR, .62, the height that we have, the elevation area ratios, and the amount of open space, it's a reasonable, a reasonable proposal for the area. So we feel like, in summary, it's a balanced project that will benefit the community by providing appropriate housing for downtown and the live-work opportunities for small businesses.
Thank you for your presentation. Next, we'll have the public hearing. So I'll open public comment. Thank you. And we've received written comment, so everyone knows. Getting this late in the game, but getting it anyway. So I hope you all have a chance to look it over quick. So we'll begin, and I ask you two minutes apiece, Mr. Paul Zink, followed by Jim Kahane.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
Paul Zink is representing the ABR.
By all means.
Hello, my name is Paul Zink, and I'm on the ABR. And I think that was a great presentation. It explained it all, so I can go over anything you, any questions you have. Our board had a couple of minor things that we would like the applicant to work on as he continues through the process, but at this point, we did feel, all of us unanimously, that the, that the project was ready to proceed, so that's why it is here today. That's all I have to say.
Any questions for Mr. Zink while he's up here? Okay, that would be Ms. Jacobs, followed by Mr. White.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Zink. It's always a pleasure to have an ABR representative to explain to us. In the most, in one of the more recent minutes from the ABR's meeting, it referred to the starkness of the project and some dissatisfaction with the northwest elevation. Could you give us some detail on that?
Two things. The first is the starkness where we would like a little bit more embellishment or a little more detail. The drawings that were done by the computer were very simplistic cutouts where the arches, and he shows a tile in the background, but it didn't have as much detail or as much interest that some of the board members were looking at or thinking for. There were pictures provided, and we're like, well, take a look over here. Do you see what they did over here in this windowsill? And you're not doing it over here, but it's a very simplistic computer model that, that the presentation that you're looking at. So the board is looking for maybe additional detailing around those arches and the doorways and things of that nature. Another thing that was mentioned was there's one area in the project that has a red tile roof. And either there should be no red tile roof, or there should be more red tile roofs sprinkled throughout the project. And we let the applicant decide how you want to proceed, but it looks a little bit odd right now with this one element. So it's, the ball is in his court. Having to do with the northwest elevation that would be viewed from the commercial parking lot in the back, there was concern from some of the board members, two in particular.
Do we have a slide of that, Steph?
There was a.
I just, I remember seeing one.
The northwest elevation.
That it was a little bit too strong, and they wanted to see additional setback relief. And that's just something the board will have to work on with the applicant. So that's in our minutes that we want him to address that. When the building is built against a zero-lot-line condition, whether it's two or three stories on that zero-lot-line, that we don't have a concern with. It was that other area that some board members wanted some additional relief.
Okay. And I remember the picture. It kind of almost grows out of the bigger commercial building. It's, it is kind of massive from that, from that view.
And we asked him to deal with that, but we didn't tell him how.
So given that it's been at ABR four times now, how would you think the ABR will be proceeding to, should it get approval, to move those forward, those concerns?
The first two really don't count because we didn't like the design, and so we're glad we have this design. As you can tell in the drawings, with the, with the driveway on one side and the buildings all on the other side, it creates more open space. How we want to proceed is we want to see some kind of reduction on the second building on the northwest side, on the second and third floor. How much? If there was tile shed roof that we would see from this elevation, that would also soften it. So there's other choices that the applicant can design with to create a softer look from this elevation, but that was a concern that was mentioned.
Okay. The site plan to move it next to the bigger building is brilliant. So it's good work for all concerned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. We'll have, sorry. Yeah, Commissioner White, followed by Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm noticing that there's one or two of the slides that show cars in the front yard areas. It looks like there's two parking spaces there. It's, it reads as open space in a lot of the, the different plans, but it is in fact two parking spaces, is it not?
It is correct. It is two parking spaces, and it is commercially zoned, which allows for parking. There is some landscaping that's shown there, and one of our comments this last time was that we wanted him to embellish the landscaping, either more of it or larger-sized plantings to be planted there to augment or to screen some of that parking that you do see. But what's interesting in this scenario, if you were at De La Guera, walking upstream, kind of where that home furnace building is with the little round turret, if you're walking upstream, a lot of the Victorian houses and the craftsman houses have a very large setback, and this has a large setback. And then you have the one that's adjacent to it that's all the way forward. So this parking, it, because I walked the site and I'm walking up there going, it's really nice how it is pushed so far back, and it makes a nice, it's pleasant to the street.
And is the, I'm recalling that, well, there's, I'm not going to be able to remember which guidelines it's in, that are not front yard parking, is not front yard parking usually discouraged? I'm asking staff that at this point.
Chair Larson, Commissioner White, I believe you're talking about the Urban Design Guidelines, the idea that the building would be closer to the sidewalk, right? That, that's sort of what you're thinking of?
Or at least that there not be parking in the front. Is that not a sort of called-out in one place or another as discouraged?
Yeah, that's sort of part of the Urban Design Guidelines, the idea that parking would be in the back as opposed to the front. That, that's, as I recall, one of the central tenets of the Urban Design, Design Guidelines. However, you know, the ABR is the board that's charged with looking at that and looking at those guidelines. I'll let Mr. Zink.
Okay. I would say that we're looking at the landscaping that happens between the sidewalk and those parked cars as the buffer, and the building that's set back farther, further back is actually a nice relief, even though there was one or two cars in there. We live in an urban environment. There is parallel parking on that street, so it's not awkward to have that parking there. We didn't see that as a problem, but we did ask for additional landscaping.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartlett?
I have a question for Paul. In the ABR meeting, which was January of this year, at the end of the minutes, it says there was a letter of support that was right into the record, evidently from Don Sharp. And then in the next meeting, which was November of this year, it says Don Sharp's in opposition. Can you tell us what happened between those two meetings, how he went from supporting the project earlier in the year to against the project more recently?
They got a new architect. So the first two schemes that had the Central Ota Corridor with the buildings on both sides, and they were very tall to the edges, was not.
So they were different schemes that were being commented on?
Completely different schemes. So that was, you know, he was glad to see something else come forward, and we, as a board, also were.
But the January meeting was Doug Singletary of B3. Was that not the same scheme?
It was the same scheme. B3 has gone through some employment situations, and Doug, I don't think works there anymore, and the project is now with Keith, who was a B3 employee but now is independent.
Right, but the, the architectural schemes that we're looking at are the same two schemes, right?
Yes.
So we went from supporting the project in January to against it in November. That's what I'm trying to understand by the same person, so. Okay.
Yeah, he'll, he'll speak.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? I had one. Is the parking in the front intended to just be used for business hours?
Chair Larson, those two spaces in the front are residential guest parking spaces, so those are dedicated to residential guests.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Kahane. Well, this is when you're called. Come on up. And that'll be followed, Mr. Kahane will be followed by Steve House. We have a lot of people who'd like to talk at the end, so we can't do it.
Is this working?
It's working, and you have two minutes.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hopefully I can do it in my time. Anyway, I'm happy I can come in here today. Unfortunately, I have some problems with this project, and I'm representing friends of Outer State Street. We're concerned about things, and I think it's squeezing too much onto too little. And in order to get here, you have to make certain findings and determinations. They've used the variable, variable density ordinance to get here. I think the parking problems is what the main thing it goes down to. Commissioner White raised the problems, and I think, and Mr. Vincent can correct me on this, I think there's a prohibition of parking in the front yard somewhere in the code. And I don't have my code with me. But what I look at is, on this, is that we're looking at certain things here, and there's some very specific findings that aren't addressed that are required for condominiums. And let me read it. It says, "The proposed development is consistent with the principles of sound community planning and will not have an adverse impact upon the neighborhood's aesthetics, parks, streets, traffic," parking, I emphasize, "and other community facilities and resources." And that's in 2713-080. And that's a finding that's really made, and it brings me to the parking issue, which is one of the major concerns. I have read the code on tandem parking. I mean, it's 2845D, and I have to quote from it. "Tandem parking, notwithstanding other, any other provisions, provisions in this title."
15 seconds.
Parking for mixed-use developments may be provided in a tandem configuration, one space behind the other. Code purely expressly says how tandem parking should be provided. There's no provision for this type of parking in the code. And I don't think legally you can get here. I have other comments I'd make if I had more time, but that's.
Time's up.
The major points.
Thank you. Excuse me, Steve House, followed by Don Sharp.
Good afternoon. I should let you know that I have an office next door at 829 De La Vina. I've been there maybe 10 years, and Don Sharp is my landlord, but I'm here on my own behalf, having seen the story polls up, and I went down and studied the plans at the Planning Department for an hour. Santa Barbara recently struggled with the issue of big boxy buildings. While there was disagreement about the best solution to the problem, I believe that most people share a concern for proliferation of overly massive developments. While the architecture I find generally attractive, and I think that the approach to locating the forward building adjacent to the 829 building is the correct solution, I think it's a far cry from the precedents cited in those photos that were shown to you. None of those projects is as unrelentingly massive, and the tall first floor robs it of any hope for the intimate scale of the courthouse projects depicted. The evolution of big boxy buildings downtown that are changing the character of Santa Barbara came about, there, there always used to be a parity between open space and building size because it didn't make economic sense to build structure to house cars. Parking garages began to be incorporated to maximize site usage due to changing economics. This is what we observed, I observed, being on the Historic Landmarks Commission. Instead of parking being open area between buildings, it became part of building mass and allowed larger floor plate areas. We didn't recognize with the first few buildings that this was the beginning of a trend. Tandem parking, I remember when I was on the ABR, that change to the municipal code was made to allow tandem, tandem parking, and that's a great thing. Vehicle lifts, I think those are useful, and I think they're appropriate where you're trying to squeeze a second unit onto an existing lot where there's a house and you just can't make it. make it work anymore.
It's almost time.
Ma'am, I have a lot to say, but I think that basically this tandem lift, car lift parking, is driving the entire project. Eleven-foot-six-inch ceilings on the entire first floor so that the third floor is squat in order to not feel too big is just massive. It's totally inappropriate. If you look at the aerial map, nothing occupies... I mean, respecting the edge, there's nothing this big on the edge.
Thank you.
It's just way too big.
Thank you.
Question for them.
Oh, yes.
Mr. House, are you in suite 210 or...
Excuse me?
Which suite of Mr. Sharp's office building are you in?
I'm in suite 300. I'm on the third floor.
300, okay. So you're up towards the street, is that right?
Towards the street, and that floor level is three feet lower than the floor level of 825, which is downhill from the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Don Sharp, followed by Don Elkhonin. Welcome, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you. I'm going to read this letter that you're receiving just now, and I'm going to do it as quickly as I possibly can. Dear Commissioners, as the owner of 829 De La Vina Office Building to the north, I have some major concerns regarding the subject development. I am not opposed to building out the property. It has been an unkempt parking lot for many years, and I do thank the owners for cleaning it up this week. My building was constructed 54 years ago as a produce warehouse and transformed by me over 30 years ago into a three- and two-story professional office building at a time when preserving old buildings and having openable windows and natural light were uncommon for offices. The tenants and I have enjoyed the two atriums, which provide these amenities to a total of 12 offices and a balcony with French doors. While these features are not guaranteed on the property line in the C2 zone, I've had many meetings with the applicant requesting the atrium nearest De La Vina to be opened up and not surrounded by two- and three-story buildings. I do appreciate the western atrium being open on two sides. The following points are my major concerns as discussed herein. As my opinion, as proposed design and density are inappropriate for the one-third acre site of budding one- and two-story residential uses on two sides. The project is too dense with too many units and is inconsistent with the context of the neighborhood. As one continues south, this site represents the beginning of a mature tree-lined residential street with very old Victorians and Cotty-style residences all the way to 101. Approval of this project will encourage similar three-story mixed-use densification and set the tone for future development. The cramming of seven units necessitates the need for a modification, stacked parking to be discussed later, and small and unusable outdoor living spaces such as the seven-by-11-foot patios surrounded by four sides of two- and three-story vertical walls accessed only through a bathroom. The mixed-use ordinance was enacted...
About 10 seconds is all you've got?
I'll read the last paragraph, which says...
I'm sorry.
"In closing, I want to leave you with several thoughts. This neighborhood has been a major part of my life for over 30 years, and I have great respect for the tree-lined residential qualities, not seeing much in downtown Santa Barbara. I have long favored the subject site being developed with residential units built against the blank walls of my building and support this concept. But the proposed development contains too many units, insufficient parking arrangement, lacks adequate landscaping as verified by the ABR, and requires a modification to further block sunlight and views from the new Bath Street condos. I urge you to request that the developer reduce the project square footage to make a more livable and desirable group of homes."
Thank you. Don Elkhonin, followed by Susan Basham. Unfortunately, it's only two minutes, sir, so I wish it could be more.
I'm Don Elkhonin. I own 817 De La Vina. I'll try to go fast. Project's better than it was for sure, but that does not make it acceptable. The project's approved as proposed. I will certainly want to employ Mr. Rivera to do my project at 817 in a very similar manner. He's using examples to attempt to show the project fits the area, wherein in fact, it still feels to me to be way out of scale. He calls the project an infill project when in fact it's a precedent-setting project. Regarding benefits from having previously compromised mature Coney Island pine, they're talking about how they're utilizing the trees that are there, but they came in and butchered the Coney Island pine without my permission, simply to get it to a point where they can now make their project work. It's in my letter. How do you monitor this office use? To me, they look like bedrooms ready to happen. There's 18 inches of landscaping in the front of the project. How do you possibly put anything into 18 inches of landscaping? There's four-foot-six inches in height for the upper lift. How do you possibly get a car in there? Read the letter, you'll see. It will be used for storage only. Project's not compatible with the surrounding properties, bulk size and scale. It's actually... It's a precedent-setting one. I will be, Mellicore will be putting in projects just like this one if this one's approved as a precedent. In paragraph 2866001, it states clearly the intent of the C2 zone. Quote, "This zone strives to provide a desirable living environment by preserving and protecting surrounding residential land uses in terms of light, air, existing visual...
Fifteen seconds.
The landscaping, they're utilizing landscaping they're putting on my project. If you look at the landscaping plan, you'll see they're showing landscaping that's on my project as their landscaping. The...
It's time.
...setback to me is also the only way they can get this project in, along with the parking in the front, the only way they can get this project in, using the parking lifts to do it. And much as I appreciate what they've done in their communication with me, they've been wonderful neighbors in attempting to communicate to me, I really think you need to think seriously about what's ahead by approving this project as it currently is.
Thank you. So Susan Basham, followed by Susan Thompson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Larson. If you would allow me an extra minute or two, I'm here on behalf of four people today, Susan and Erin Thompson and Judy and Larry Lawrence. Larry Lawrence is not here, so he will not be speaking. I'll try to be as quick as I can. We did submit a letter. You should have received it earlier today. And attached to that letter are several photographs, and I would like to call your attention to those at the outset here, because the applicant has shown you lovely views of this project from De La Vina Street, you know, from the north, from, you know, one side of it, from square on, from the other side of it. But he can't show you the view from our client's property, because the view from our client's property is literally looking up. It's not looking out. All he can show you is something that looks like sort of an aerial view looking down. Our client's property is, they own two condominium units in what have been referred to as the Bath Street condos, and both of their units are in the far rear of that condominium project, 10 feet from the property line. So in looking at the story polls from the living room of the Thompson property, the dining room of the Thompson property, and the bedroom of the Thompson property, you will see a wall. That's what their view will be, 10 feet from their own property line. We have read the staff report carefully, and with all due respect to staff and staff's interpretation of the ordinance, we don't read it the same way, because the ordinance that describes the setback and the required distance from the property line says that when you have a C2 property, a lot, zoned C2, next to a lot that's zoned residential, all buildings and structures on that lot, without regard to what they're actually used for, need to be located either 10 feet from the property line or half the building height, whichever is greater. Now, we heard the applicant and staff recite that section to you, but neither of them pointed out that the ordinance actually calls for whichever is greater. And greater in this case is certainly half the height of the building, as the applicant has shown in his illustration, it's 16 feet. Even with the 16-foot setback, it's still a wall. It's still not the air and the light and the open space that the people looking out their living room window ought to see, but it certainly would be an improvement over the 10 feet that currently is being proposed. Finally, I will just say about that eucalyptus tree in the corner. I was out there two days ago, and some of you may have noticed this as well, the eucalyptus branches of the eucalyptus tree are well within where the story polls were mounted. By the time they get through trimming back that tree for purposes of construction, there will be nothing left to grow. So although it shows and it looks nice in the plans, that's not the way it's going to come out. Mr. Zink's comments about that elevation, the design of it, stepping it back, all dovetail nicely with our client's concerns, and we ask you at this point not to approve the project as proposed, but to send it for additional plan modifications, which would have a much greater setback in the rear to accommodate the needs of these owners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Susan Thompson, you yielded your time to your attorney?
Oh, did she take more than two minutes?
She didn't take more than...
I was just going to use like...
She took more than two. You can have one.
Mr. Lawrence yielded his time to me.
Oh, okay, fine. Mr. Lawrence, well, he's not here to yield it.
I'll just take a minute.
You get a minute.
I just wanted to point your attention to the fact that each of those photos was taken inside our house, and those are each of the living areas, the living room view, the dining room view, and the bedroom view. I was appalled yesterday to learn when I called staff that their entire recommendation for the encroachment at the rear yard setback was based on an inaccurate understanding of the law. Ms. Basham's letter to you, which I apologize for the delay, but we didn't have notice of this meeting, but her letter details that flawed rationale, and before you give any weight to the staff recommendation, I'd like you to make sure and clearly read that letter because they are mistaken. Secondly, I just wanted to stress the fact that every single factor in this case combines to eliminate every single land use purpose that setbacks were intended to preserve. And if there was ever a case...
Time.
If there was ever a case to increase a minimum setback in the rear, it's this case.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Jacobs.
May I ask a question of this speaker?
Yes.
You indicated, Ms. Johnson?
Thompson.
Thompson, sorry. That you did not get notice of this hearing. I think you've been to some of the ABR meetings, and I'm wondering what you think might have happened with this hearing that didn't get you adequate notice in time?
I came to the ABR meeting because the previous owner gave me notice, and at the ABR meeting, I stated my name on the record and requested notice as the new owner of the property. I also put in a written request for notice and provided that to staff, and I was not mailed notice. I objected to the hearing because of the failure to notify us, and we prepared...
So your notice in the previous meetings came from the person you bought your property from or from the previous project applicants that had this project before?
The previous owner provided us with notice just as a courtesy.
Of your project?
Yeah.
Of... Okay, got it. So, because you didn't get one for this meeting and you found out about it in a roundabout way?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Erin Thompson.
Hello, thank you for giving me time to speak.
Two minutes.
Bringing up a few things. Mostly everything's been talked about through Susan, and also I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. Mr. White brought up a good thing with the parking lot, and you could see what they did with our setback, and we weren't opposed to anything then by, you know, when we bought the house, to building something there, but not a massive wall that just blocks out every kind of light we get from our house and everything. And then also, not to mention, the parking situation that Mr. White brought up. It seems like, almost like a safety issue too, because now we're boxed into the back there, and it doesn't seem like, and these people are going to put their cars with gasoline and whatever else in these two garages stacked on top of each other, and we're next to just this massive wall. The trees were already talked about. Also, with all the parking, there's already enough parking, there's hardly any parking either on Bath Street and everything else, and that will also be used, because there's no parking on De La Vina there, so everybody would have to, well, then again, use up the whole neighborhood and there'd be more traffic, because there's not really reasonable parking around there. And also, so they put those two parking spots right in the front, and I think that's what pushed the whole building back to block off our view. I mean, if they could have moved that forward and given us some more open space in there, would have been nice. So I object to this building as it is right now, and hopefully you guys can, hopefully see our side of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judy Lawrence, our last speaker.
I'm sorry to be entering this seemingly late, but I also wasn't notified properly. We purchased our condominium July 29th of 2008. I was never notified at the January meeting, and none of the notices came to the Bath Street address. They went to our Upland home, so we were unable to make the last meeting, and I found out about this one just in time to come up late last night. First of all, it seems like an attractive project, but I get the feeling that all of the setbacks have been accommodating every other side of the building but the side that's legally required. We looked for a year and a half to find a property in Santa Barbara, knowing that we could trust Santa Barbara. Everyone said, you know, these are the people that are very strict on their zoning. This is zoned to have a setback that is 10 feet or half the size of the building. That's it. It's in the law. I'm not a lawyer. My husband's not a lawyer, he's a physician. It's in the law. So for us to have purchased this property, knowing that this was going to be developed, happily to be developed, because it has been a problem back there, you know, there's cars that are parked in the middle of the night, there's drinking going on, there's people going through the garbage containers in the middle of the night, we're looking forward to it being developed. And it's an attractive, although massive, it has some architectural features that are delightful in the neighborhood, but it's massive. And we're not going to see that side of it. We're going to see a blank wall. And even though it's been explained to us that that top section is moved back and we have a larger side yard on the top, we don't have the use of our roof. That's where you would see that. We look out onto a blank wall. The trees that they're saving, that's very nice. They don't mention the incredibly beautiful palm tree that is no place on their diagram. And you've probably seen the palm tree if you went out there. I don't know if they're going to dig it up and sell it, because it would seem to me that that's a very expensive palm tree, but that's what I see right now out of my bedroom window. So thank you so much for your time, and as I say, Dr. Lawrence and I apologize for being late, coming to the table, but this is our dream property. Please preserve it for us. Thank you.
We appreciate you coming today and your drive last night. All right. Questions from the Commission. There goes the light. Mr. Thompson, and then Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for staff and perhaps the applicant that is probably not the last question I'll have, but it's the basic thing that came to my mind when we looked at this report and were asked to approve a tentative subdivision map, which you could expect for a project like this, and a modification for rear yard setback. And the applicant explained to us that the front yard setback was devised by setting a string line between the two adjacent buildings, which is a nice, simple way to start, but when I see the site plan, I see about 21-foot of front yard setback, 10-foot of rear yard setback, and we're asked to do a modification. Had anywhere in the review process, did anybody look at moving, even if you don't change the building, did anybody look at just moving the building forward five feet? We've got two more parking spaces than the ordinance requires, according to the staff report here, so saving parking spaces doesn't seem to me to be germane to this discussion. So I just wonder, as a starting off point, did anybody ever look at just moving the whole thing forward to eliminate the requirement for a mod?
Chair Larson and Commissioner Thompson, the, in the applicant attempting to make the, work with the neighbors, specifically the neighbors on De La Vina Street, that is where the building got significantly pushed back. So in working with those neighbors, the building was pushed back further, and the idea or the thought, I believe, was to put the park, two of the parking spots there so that the building mass wouldn't be there.
That's not answering my question. Did anybody in the course of the discussion look at moving this building forward? I understand the string line issue about starting off between the two buildings, but did anybody look at a site plan where you would move the building forward to eliminate the requirement for a mod?
Chair Thompson, I mean Chair Larson and Commissioner Thompson, that was the original proposal, was two buildings right up on the front of the property line, on either side of the lot. So when a project goes through design review, they didn't like that, and that's how it morphed into setting it back further. So yes, I would say that we did look at that.
Yeah, I didn't say right on the property line. I said move it forward five feet. Did anybody look at doing that?
I don't, I think they went from the front.
There's 21 feet available in the front, and you're five feet over in the back, so... Mr. Rivera, did you look at doing that?
Chair Larson, Commissioner Thompson, we...
Chair Larson, Commissioner Thompson, we did look at configurations like that, and we felt that it compressed the rear building such that it was compromising the livability of the interior, interiors of those one-bedroom units, and that's how we came about the configuration we have.
I guess I'm confused, then. If you just moved the whole thing, and I didn't talk about redesigning anything yet, just as a starting point, take the whole building setup and move the whole thing forward five feet, you wouldn't need a mod.
We just don't have the, there's just not enough room to do that. It's...
Okay, I'm not, I can see I'm not going to get an answer, but if you've got 21-foot of setback in the front, you can't tell me there's not room to do it.
Well, what we were trying to do was, again, configure our buildings around those light wells and keep those open, so that was, in a lot of ways, setting the precedent for the site plan, the way it developed, was trying to preserve those.
Yeah, the second light well wouldn't be a problem. The first light well, if you took the buildings as is, you would cover about half of the light well.
Correct. If you move that front building anyway, then you're compromising that light well.
Right, and so that was the reason why you didn't choose to move it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson, Ms. Jacobs.
Come back, Mr. Rivera, these first two are for you. I have four, but I think these are going to go quick. So, on the vertical tandem parking, the plate height required to accommodate that's about 12 feet? Is that what I'm hearing? Because the, the first floor of this building is tall.
Commissioner Jacobs.
And part of it contributes to the commercial look of the commercial spaces and so on, and I'm wondering, is it driven by the tandem parking?
The tandem parking requires an 11-foot-six clear in the ceiling. The residential plate height adjacent to it is 11 feet, so it is a combination of accommodating the parking lift and the heights that the manufacturer recommends, as well as giving these smaller ground floor spaces a nicer vertical proportion to make them more spacious feeling.
Okay, so they're tall. The other question I have is about trash circulation and trash trucks and so on on the property. How is that going to work? I looked at this plan, but for some reason I couldn't figure it out.
There are two trash enclosures for common use adjacent to the central parking, so that accommodates the majority of the trash, and then three of the one-bedroom units have trash in the carts stored in their garage, so the trash trucks would pull up and those carts would be pulled, pulled to the vehicles.
Trash truck is going to pull to the middle of the driveway where the, or they can go all the way to the end?
No further than the middle of the driveway, then the other carts could be, you know, handled in, into the car.
Okay. And then this is for staff or for applicant. Are the parking spaces in the front yard required per the zoning and code and et cetera, or are they extras? I mean, if they go away, are there now, is there now a need for another modification? Or would there be?
Chair Larson and Commissioners, the requirement is 12 spaces for the residential, 1.75 guest parking spaces, and three for the commercial. So, the total amount that they're, that they're required is 17, so they do have two extra spaces.
So, the front yard ones are truly extras? They don't ride in any...
Is that true?
I don't think so. I think those, the guest parking for the, for the condo units.
Yes, Chair Larson, Commissioner Jacobs, my understanding was the two front parking spaces, those are required guest spaces for the residential units, since we have seven units.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I was hearing both.
So, even though, even though the math comes up with a, with a smaller number, the practicality through transportation eyes is that you have to have, you can't have 1.5 spaces for a unit.
So, those are your required guest parking for the residential part of the property?
Correct.
Good, okay. That's my questions. Thanks.
Madam Chair, if I could elaborate on that a little bit?
Please.
The reason that there's two extra residential is because for one-bedroom spaces, the parking requirement is 1.5 spaces times four is six, right? So, but they're providing two per unit, they're providing eight. So, the two that are extra are in the, are in the residential, and they couldn't really be eliminated, really.
Mr. Cotto, the problem I'm having is with the terminology that they're being called extra. Extra infers that we could get rid of them, and that that would have no impact on the project. It sounds to me like they are not extra, they are required. They happen to be in this particular spot in the front yard, but they are required, they are not extra. Extra, to me, sounds like expendable.
Yes, that is true. The two that are in front are the guest parking spaces, and they are required. There are two parking spaces in the one-bedrooms that, that are not required but are provided.
Are they two, two discs because of the tandem garage?
Correct.
And not be used for guest parking for all kinds of good reasons?
Correct.
Thanks.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I had a list of questions, but I never really did get an answer because Mr. Sharp only had two minutes and couldn't really finish his letter, and I was curious if he could at least respond as to what happened between the third and fourth review to kind of change his support on the project. I'd like to hear his, his side on that.
Part of my letter that I didn't get to read was the fact that that is erroneous, and I was not in favor of the project. I was relieved that we were getting a solution that I felt was workable, rather than the double-loaded corridor driveway buildings, but I was still concerned about many things and was not in favor of the project.
Right, so you were at least in favor of moving in the right direction from where it started, then?
And Mr. Elkhonin's, also, his comment on there as being favorable was not favorable.
Okay, I was just trying to understand the minutes, so thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you.
I do have questions for both the staff and the applicant. First, for staff, on recent projects, we've been having explanations from Transportation Division on how the projects do or don't comply with the pedestrian master plan. Can you address it on this project? And what's the street right of way? What's the pedestrian through zone? Do we meet all the criteria on this project?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bartlett, we don't have an answer for you. I'll try to get one. But that, I believe that wasn't something that was reviewed much in the DART review, was it?
I thought that was our new standard, because we're doing that on every project, and it's, it's in the book, and we've adopted it, and we had a lunch meeting on it, and...
I'll find out. It may very well comply, but let me, let me make a phone call and find out.
Also, on the setback analysis, if you go to, back to Mr. Mahan's infamous book on three-story buildings, there's a whole section on the stepback analysis that you do on setbacks. And when I look at that and add up the surface area for the first floor, the second floor and third floor, each one measured with its setback, the average setback that comes as a result of doing this analysis is 16 feet, which is the requirement. So, I'm wondering why that can't be applied in this case, and then I know there's another section in the zoning ordinance that when the third floor is less than 50% of the ground floor footprint, that there's a different methodology. Are those not applicable because it's in the C2 zone, and that's only for R3, R4? Because this obviously is in the C2 book, now all the examples cited, so...
Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. Vincent.
I'd like to take a couple shots at this. First off is that the, the staff report explanation regarding the, the setback, the rear setback, I think what, what staff was trying to explain, and we all missed this, is that the staff report reads as if this were a residential building in a C2 zone. It's, it's not a residential building, it's in a C2 zone. The comparison that Mr. Rivera made in his presentation, and I believe that this was the intent of staff in its comparison and its explanation for support of the modification application, is that comparing what would be, what would be possible if this was an R3 zone parcel against this other R3 zone parcel, and the fact that it's an entirely residential use in the back, comparing those two locations. So, Ms. Basham is absolutely correct in her letter that, that there is no distinction in the, the interior setback for the C2 zone where the parcel is abutting a residentially zoned parcel. The, the treatment of commercial buildings and the treatment of residential buildings for purposes of defining that setback is the same. So, that's, that's the, the problem, and that's a problem in, in how the report explains this modification request. Mr. Rivera's explanation was accurate in the sense of the, the concept that was attempting to be explained, comparing essentially residential uses versus residential uses. Let's see, Commissioner Bartlett, the, the point you're making there and Mr. Mahan's volume or his, his study, while useful, has been, is outdated now. The zoning ordinance amendments, no, don't do that. But the zoning ordinance amendments came after he prepared his, his volume, and so the C2 setbacks have been changed since he prepared that volume, and so while it's, it's a useful comparison for three-story buildings and how you deal with massing of, of adjacent tall structures, it, it doesn't mirror what the zoning ordinance now says for C2 zoning.
And, and the 50% third floor area doesn't apply in C2, then?
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay, is that it, Mr. Bartlett? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I have a list.
Okay.
At the closing of the applicant's letter, he made reference to an attached green features list, but we didn't get the attachment. Is that available somewhere, or can you explain what those green features are?
Yes, Chair Larson, Commissioner Bartlett, that was essentially the exhibit that I put in my PowerPoints. That was the exact same list based on the Lead for Homes.
Okay, because I hunted all through and couldn't really find it, so... Question for staff, again, related to the parking versus the rear yard setback issue. If the buildings were to move forward, could the parking occur within that rear setback? Or did the, would the parking then need to be 16 feet away?
Yes, it's, it would, that would be allowed.
Parking, parking would be allowed at the rear?
I, let me check the zoning ordinance. I think I'm almost positive that it would be allowed.
And then, on the, on the issue of parking, you know, it's been brought up that there's an excess of two stalls, but really it's, it's fractions of a stall for each unit, so it's not like there's any place you can get rid of it, because it's provided within the tandem garage configurations. That's why we end up with a grand total that's higher than the, than the base. Okay. All right, that's it for questions.
Madam Chair, I have an answer for Commissioner Bartlett's question regarding the, if it was residential parking in the rear of the lot, or residential parking for lots adjacent to residential zones, would have to respect the R3, R4 requirements. The setback requirements for R3, R4 in the rear setback for a garage, carport, or uncovered parking is three feet. So, the parking would have to respect a three-foot setback in that rear yard area, but it doesn't necessarily preclude at least one parking space being moved back there, but it would have to respect that three feet.
Right, and the stalls that we're talking about potentially moving are the front stalls that are the guest stalls for residential and not the commercial parking.
That's my understanding of, of the program.
And what, the, the driving issue right now seems to be the building location versus the property line light wells that are trying to be preserved on the adjacent property. So, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, Mr. Cotto.
I do have a, I do have a response for the pedestrian master plan question. Transportation staff just called me, and they said it does comply with the pedestrian master plan, which is why it doesn't show up in the staff report. There's a 60-foot wide right of way, and that requires a six-foot sidewalk and a four-foot parkway, and that is what is in front of this project.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions, and the first one's probably to staff and Ms. Brodessen, has to do with the project statistics. And I'm not clear as to whether the commercial square, unit sizes that are listed in your project statistic table, are those included in the residential unit numbers, or are they in addition to the residential unit numbers? So, if, if the three, 218 square feet of, of commercial unit C were added to the 1752 of unit three, that, that gives us a little larger number.
Correct, yes.
And so, the case is you add the two numbers to get, to get the total mixed use, work, live, live-work space, square footage. Okay. And this is for either staff or the applicant, and I guess it relates to my first question. What's the vehicle that we use to guarantee that the commercial portions of units one, two, and A, B, and C, or one, two, and three, remain commercial and are not converted to another bedroom, which is, is not a problem for the applicant, but the ultimate owners of these properties when they're purchased on the market and they see, well, I, I really need more space. Can those be converted? How do we know if they're converted? What's the practical way to make sure the intent of this plan is preserved over time? Please.
Chair Larson, Commissioner Justice, if I may?
Yep.
We would write into the CCNR's restrictions as to the use of those office spaces, so that they would have to be dedicated office, commercial office use only for those adjacent units, and again, couldn't be subdivided or sublet, so it would be a CCNR mechanism.
And the Condominium Owners Association would implement that CCNR provision?
Correct.
So, it does have some oversight?
Yes, that would, that would be the mechanism.
Okay. While you're still up at the podium, what, what thought, if any, did you give to taking the third-story units in the front building and spreading them out a little bit more to give more of an opening for the light shaft that that, that open space creates? Because I, I worked in Mr. Sharp's building for eight years, and I had that space that looks out through that light well to the parking lot, so I'm sensitive to that.
I mean, currently, that's looking out at the exhaust pipes of some cars, but...
Right.
We went through a couple different iterations in our discussions with the neighbors. We initially had a tighter light well, so we did go through at least one iteration where we opened that up, and then at a certain point, and you know how these infill sites are, it's, you know, you push in one place and it kind of dings you someplace else, so we kind of took it to where we, we felt it was a reasonable balance between our neighbors' concerns and our, our objectives.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we go any further, I just want to, I apologize, but this is kind of inherent in, in making these calls as we're sitting here. Regarding the rear setback and the parking back there, non-residential or mixed-use parking, so mixed use, this parcel is a mixed-use project, that parking would have to respect a five-foot landscaped setback in the rear, and it would also have to provide a six-foot-high fence or decorative wall on that property line with the rear. Sorry for the other mistake.
It's okay. All right. Anything else, Mr. Justice? Mr. White, thank you for your patience.
Madam Chair, I wanted to get back to the, my original question about the front yard and the parking. Do we, do you have the Urban Design Guidelines handy here, Mr. Cotto? I just, I don't know where the shoulds and the shalls and such are in that language. Thank you. And then to Mr. Vincent, the question was raised as to the legality of tandem parking. I'm, your silence on that, I'm figuring, says that, in your view, that, that the vertical tandem is assumed to be legal and, and appropriate.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, we have had at least one project... Madam Chair, members of the Commission, we have had at least one project that had a vertical tandem, and the applicant referred to it. And quite honestly, I, sitting here right now, I don't know, I can't give you a definitive answer in this sense. The, I don't know of any provision of the municipal code that prohibits that type of tandem parking, but it also, I can't point to something that allows it. And as far as one other point that was made by that speaker regarding the front setback parking, that is, you can't park in the front setback. This is a C2-zoned parcel, there is no front setback, and so, that parking, while Ms. Cotto will give you the answer regarding the Urban Design Guidelines, it is not, it doesn't violate the zoning ordinance.
The zoning ordinance allows it.
Correct.
Yeah. And actually, we've had two, as I recall, two tandem projects. We've had one, which is vertical up on the Victoria that you mentioned, and then the other one is a vertical down, which is the, that little, a bunch of little offices there on, was it Santa Barbara Street, something like that, Santa Barbara and Victoria. So, we have seen another strategy taken on there. I think those are my questions at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, and I just have a couple. Did you do solar calculations on, there are two light wells, correct?
Chair Larson, yes, there are two light wells. However, the westernmost light well, we are to the north of with our building mass, so we have our common open space in front of the westernmost light well.
Oh, so you didn't need to?
Yeah, there's no building there.
Okay. And my other question is, I mean, this is, has to do with the non-ability to convert the commercial space to living space. So, if a person lives there for 15 years and operates their business and they retire, they're required to sell?
Well, that's an interesting point.
And how, if that were my home, and I operated my interior design business out of that office, and after 15 years of living there, it would break my heart, if I love my neighbors in my neighborhood, to have to sell because I couldn't use that room for something that wasn't commercial, and I couldn't lease it, and, you know, I'm just, I'm just asking that question because that's the kind of thing that happens, and that's life. So, we need to think about that.
I think that's a, that's a marketing issue with the unit.
Well, I always, you know, we're going through these, we're going through these experiences, and often, senior people come and say, well, I'm going to live there anyway, and, you know, and I'm the owner, and I'm going to owner-occupy. Not that that's happening in this project, but it's just something I think that in general we need to think about, because the cycle of life is going to happen, and nobody wants to be put out of their home. Okay, those were my questions. So, any other questions that you can think of? Oh, I have a light on. Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One question for the applicant. The only reason the rear building is mixed-use is because of the unit number three has that one commercial space.
Correct.
If that was to become a three-bedroom unit, instead of just being a two-bedroom unit, then it's all residential, then the rear setback implies there's no mod there, but you would need a mod to have the zero lot line where you abut the adjacent building where it's not an issue, correct?
I would.
Cotto, I see everybody's hands up. Mr. Cotto?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bartlett?
We'll go to the source.
Commissioner Bartlett, that's not correct. The modification would still be required, because in this zone, it doesn't matter what the use of the building is, the setback is 10 feet or half the height of the building. Because it's adjacent to a residential zone, and I think what, that was your...
I thought if it was residential use, it goes by the R3, R4 setbacks. If it's mixed-use or commercial, it goes by the C2, I thought.
My understanding as well, Commissioner.
No, that is, I think Mr. Vincent's going to read the exact language.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, that, the distinction between residential and non-residential buildings are for interior setbacks adjacent to non-residentially-zoned parcels. When you have an interior setback adjacent to a residential zone, there is no distinction between the two. It's subsection C of section 2866060 of the municipal code, and it reads as follows. "The interior setback of not less than the indicated distance shall be provided between the interior lot line that abuts a residentially-zoned parcel and all buildings, structures, and parking on the lot as follows." The first paragraph is, "All buildings and structures, 10 feet or one-half of the building heights, whichever is greater."
Yes, I missed it.
Thank you.
Chair Larson, if I may, in hearing the discussion and the concerns of everyone involved, if we were able to shave our buildings and put them on a diet and skinny them up, shift the rear buildings slightly to the east, but not to the point where we would compromise any of the light wells, and get rid of the rear yard modification, in other words, we would trim six feet back, I think in discussing with the owner here, that we would be willing to do that, to skinny the buildings down and slide them to the east such that we can accommodate a 16-foot rear setback.
Okay, I see Ms. Lodge's light is on. Mr. Vincent, first?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, a couple comments, and I, and then I think that the Commission probably wants to ponder that proposal from the applicant. Regarding the tandem parking, Commissioner White was asking, okay, how do you deal with tandem parking? Is it allowed? Is it not allowed? The Parking Designs Section, 2890045, Parking Design Standards, lays out the typical parking situation. It's a parking space. It talks about how many turning movements you have to have, or are allowed to have, in order to have a properly functioning parking space. Then, it says, and that's the requirement under subsection A. Subsection B of that section says that variations from those above standard requirements must be approved pursuant to a waiver by the Public Works Director. So, you could have a waiver of that standard parking design. Then it goes through, and you get to subsection D, that speaks to tandem parking, and it specifically calls out this type of tandem parking configuration, and it basically allows that as a, as an allowed design standard if it meets the qualifications in that subsection. Well, as Mr. Cohan properly pointed out, this particular parking design doesn't fall into that typical definition or design of tandem parking. I would submit that it could be considered as an acceptable design under a waiver from the Public Works Director. So, and I believe that is how we've come to other parking designs with lifts, is that they've looked at them, and because they, their manner of operation is similar in the sense that turning, the number of turning movements necessary for the parking to operate, and the fact that that turning occurs on private property as opposed to having to pull out into a street in order to affect the turns and those kinds of things, that it meets the intent of the ordinance as to the parking designs. So, there's my best answer regarding tandem parking.
Thank you. Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to go back to the noticing issue. Is this another case, Mr. Vincent, where, since you didn't comment on it, it does not influence the timing and so on of this hearing?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the noticing issue, you have two parties who are saying that they didn't receive notice. One of them is saying they didn't receive notice because it went to a different address. Well, my suspicion is, is that particular property owner did receive notice pursuant to our code. It's just that they, in the, we use the assessor's roles to inform us as to who owns these parcels, and the assessor's role has a certain address provided. And we sent, it sounds like we sent notice of the hearing to the address provided to the assessor role. The second situation, I believe, and staff could help me with the facts, you know, the specifics of the facts, but I believe Ms. Thompson made her request to be an interested party at the November 16th ABR hearing. And I'll have to rely on staff as to when the labels, when the notice for this hearing was sent, but I believe it was in a matter of days, literally, that same week. And so, in that particular situation, it's just that the logistics of getting from that ABR hearing onto the interested parties' list in time to be on that label list for sending out the notice for this hearing, that's where that issue happened. You know, it's unfortunate, we don't want to miss those kinds of things, but at the same time, the, here we have Ms. Thompson here, she had her attorney present a very informed letter regarding the issues on the application, and so, that's, those are the facts that I understand about the noticing in this situation.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. All right, this is it. Any other questions? No? All right, then we'll have comments from the Commission. Ms. Jacobs, Mr. Thompson, and you're overwhelming me. Okay, Jacobs first.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Larson, and thank you to the public who came today, especially our professional community, that some live next door and some have been on the review boards for these kinds of projects, and it's really wonderful to have you here, because you bring another level of analysis to the issue. The first thing that is on my mind is what Mr. Vincent just discussed, which has to do with the notice issue to a neighbor who is the property owner of record and who has specifically requested to be noticed on this project, and who did not get a notice. And I find that very worrisome. It seems to me that a two-week turnaround should be not a problem for staff in terms of someone who's specifically taken the trouble to go to ABR meetings and to get themselves on the list for being noticed. That notice should have gone out, and I don't, I really can't make any excuses for why Ms. Johnson had to scramble at the last minute to, Thompson, excuse me, had to scramble to get here at the last minute, with an attorney no less. The, overall, I can't support the project as presented. The intent of the C2 encroachment policies and the zones, and the zoning ordinance are pretty clear. Mr. Vincent has gone over them. I cannot make the findings for consistency with this zoning ordinance for the rear yard I also cannot find that this is a necessary modification to produce a development on this property. This lot is, there's nothing on it now. It'll be a scraped lot. It is not encumbered in any particular way. It's not a corner lot. It doesn't have any strange easements. It really is just clean, square footage, and could be developed in so many good ways without a modification. I cannot make the findings for necessity, and furthermore, the staff description that the benefit of this modification would be to allow more floor space on the first and second floor, therefore, not requiring a third floor, that is unacceptable reasoning to me. A benefit is something that benefits the community, not something that provides more square footage for the potential developer and their clients. So, I cannot support the project. I could not support the tentative subdivision map either, because the site is, I can't find that the site is physically suitable for the proposed development without the modification. So, it's a no on both items for me. And should there be a continuance, or should it come back at some future date? It would have to be reconsidered in terms of its overall bulk and scale. The parking would have to be reconsidered. The plate heights of the first floor would have to be reconsidered, and I would not be able to support parking in the front yard setback. I would have to really see it spelled out, why that is the preferred place for it to go. I know it has some potential in the zoning ordinance, but in the Urban Design Guidelines, it's not considered desirable. So, it may be allowable, but not desirable. And so, that is, I will keep it short. I have other notes on the project and things that I think are not so good about it. I do think that the movement that has been made to move it to the side and stack it up against a three-story adjacent structure are good. I think the project is developable. I think the overall program for the mixed-use is good. There's a lot of good things about it. The design is fine. It's just too big. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm not in favor of the modification request. I see nothing that was presented today in the staff report or from any of the public speakers that would allow me to make the required findings. I think it's nice that the applicant went to the trouble to try to protect and preserve the light, for the light wells on the adjacent property, and it was a nice idea to adjust the setback along the front line to kind of do a string line between the two properties. But like I said before, I think that's kind of a starting point. So, I would support a continuation for the project to be redesigned to eliminate any mod requirement. And without going into details about some of the project specifics, I would note that the two-bedroom units are on the high side for what we've been trying to achieve in the downtown housing, especially when you consider that there are office units appended to those. And I also would not be in favor of the front yard parking, even though it's not in the technical setback. I'm not saying that I wouldn't be convinced that front yard parking was approvable, but at this juncture, I would not be in favor of it. So, bottom line, I would like to see this continued and redesigned to eliminate any modifications.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm thinking very similar to Commissioner Thompson. I think that the intent of the modification request at the rear yard was really to comply with what R3 would do adjacent to R3. It would be treated exactly the same on either side of the line. So, I think the spirit and intent of that rear yard modification was a good one. I hope that, as the applicant re-looks at this project, that we can at least keep, I think, the sense of what he was trying to achieve of pulling that third floor even further away. Granted, if he wants to omit the mod, he'll move it back six feet, and we'll have a three-story wall all the way up, which I feel is going to be worse. So, I could really support the modification, because I don't think the alternative is a benefit. I think what we have here is the applicant has really weighed the impacts on two adjacent neighbors in striving so hard to respect the light and ventilation for the light wells, which are on a property line, that have property line agreements to be filled in. I mean, technically, those could be filled in, and no mods on this application, but because he's trying to work with that neighbor to the north, that's why we're getting the modification request to the rear. So, if we improve it for one neighbor, we're going to certainly impact the other neighbor more greatly. So, I think it's a real balancing act. I think we have a willing applicant. I think there's solutions here. I think it's certainly within striking distance. I would be in favor of a continuance. I think there's an easy solution with keeping a lot of the work that's been done and the good attribute... good attributes of this project. I don't feel that the mass bulk and scale have been overdone. And I think the analysis that the applicant did, both in the elevation views and the FARs and everything else, really point to that. It's quite small. So, I mean, we could have a commercial building, property line to property line, or looking very much like what's next door. So I think, in some ways, a lot of the neighbors should be happy. This is the type of project that's being proposed as opposed to straight commercial. So I don't want to come down too hard on the mass bulk and scale issue because we might get something totally different if this doesn't happen. But I do think we have an applicant that's very talented. I think he's heard our concerns. I think there's some easy solutions that will work for both neighbors to keep the light wells and to solve the rear setback issue and keep this concept intact. So I will definitely support a continuance.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cotto, did you find anything in that urban design guideline that speaks to that front yard setback?
Madam Chair, Commissioner White, I found some things. I didn't do an exhaustive study, but Chapter 8, and this is Policy 8.1.1 on surface parking lots, sorry, 8.1, yeah, 8.1.1. Locate surface parking lots away from the street edge to minimize visual effects on the streetscape. Surface parking lots should be located behind habitable buildings and toward the interior of blocks. That's one. The second one that I found is Policy 3.2.4, which is in the Building and Street Edge section, set capes, it's on the setbacks and landscaping area. It says, "Where appropriate and consistent with neighboring development, locate new buildings on the edge of the public right-of-way to define the sidewalk line." And then 3.2.5 also says, "Where buildings are setback from the public right-of-way, place city-reviewed and approved landscaping or architectural elements, e.g., arcades or low decorative walls, along the edge of the right-of-way to define the sidewalk line." And I can give this to you.
It's okay. That's all right for now. But thank you. And when this comes back around, perhaps staff can just give that a little closer look. Let's see. I thought that my colleagues have spoken to the primary issues that I have with the project, that, again, the mod, I don't think is, that the findings are there to allow the mod, that the, obviously, I'm having some trouble with the front yard parking. There is some, the tandem parking, the imaginative use of that is kind of what's driving the, giving you the ability to have this much intensity on the project. I mean, the other way that, I don't think this lot's quite big enough to have an underground parking lot, but that's the other way that we've seen larger, let's say, 20,000-square-foot lots come in with more intensity than we're used to historically. I think one area that I'd want to speak about that others haven't yet is that we've had about, I think we've had about four or five live-work projects in town. I'm thinking that there's the Chapala Building, the first Burkis-Chapala Building is live-work. There's a Burkis Building on Correo and Garden that has live-work, I believe. And I think there's one or two, there's one on Diligera Street. There's a small number of those live-work situations. And I've sort of challenged that and said, I don't think that those are working as live-work. I think, I really bet that we, and I think it would be something that would be good to follow up on, to see how they're doing. Are they in fact being used for live-work or are they being used as another bedroom? And my guess is, I tried to get into the Burkis Building on Lower Chapala Street, and there's a locked gate and you're not allowed in. So that's a start toward it being unlikely that it's being used for commercial purposes. So I appreciate that you can put it in CCNRs and maybe one neighbor is going to be looking over the shoulder and saying, you know, keep it as an office, and maybe that'll work in CCNRs. But it's a little bit of the tail wagging the dog where we have these little bits of commercial space and it's exempting the project from the R3 setback. So it's, we've seen, live-work, which has worked for me, has been on the Milpiss Building, which has storefrontage, the one that we recently approved. And then the other one was, which I didn't support, but I supported the concept, which was the Hayward Building on Santa Barbara Street. Had actual sort of storefrontage there that, you know, then, of course, there's a real sense that commercial is going to work. So I'm struggling with that, that whole commercial element is, I appreciated seeing that there wasn't a shower in that, in the bathrooms on the lowest floor. But otherwise, I thought that Ms. Jacobs hit the points, so I won't belabor those and look forward to seeing this project, as the applicant said, skinny down. And many of the design elements are good and many of the unit sizes are good. We're seeing, four of the units are under 1,000 square feet. And that's a couple of years ago. You didn't see projects coming in with any units under 1,000 square feet. So I thank you for that. And I feel like that is really the spirit of the direction that we're headed toward with these mixed-use units. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with all of the comments of the commissioners who've already spoken. And the couple of comments I do have is, first to the applicant, and I think you really have done a good job in how you have structured this building. I understand Mr. White's concerns about live-work and I share some of them. At the same time, I think we have to make an effort to do this kind of sustainable development in this part of town because of the location. It cries out for it, and all the work we're doing on a general plan cry out for exactly this type of project. The question is, how do you balance the impacts on the neighbors? And that's the large part of the comments we've heard today. And I think there's a little ways to go in getting us there, but you're very close to it. I think, looking at the last slide that the applicant put up, I think really told a huge story for me. A building with a height of 31 and 1/2, 32 feet in this area of town with a floor area of .62. Has anybody in the Commission seen a project with a floor area of .62 in the past four years? I think it's in the bottom 10% of all the projects we've seen, at least in my career on this plan. So this is volumetrically appropriate for a scaled-down Santa Barbara-scale project that, with the types of square footages here, does meet local demand. It provides a resource that is oriented towards at least possibly meeting some local demand and some local need. Like the rest of the commissioners, I can't, I can't make the findings for the setback mod, but it's partly due to, I keep not seeing a reasoning regarding necessity. I saw the reasoning in the applicant's presentation today for why they're doing what they're doing, but I don't see the reasoning why this is an absolute necessity in terms of it not being able to accomplish the basic objectives of the project in another way that doesn't violate the zoning ordinance. And I think we would serve ourselves well, even though our good counsel and I have a difference of opinion about this topic. But I think if the staff applications, the applications that were required of applicants required a statement or a reasoning of necessity, it would cause a lot less resources and time to be spent on this issue. If we could get people to better explain why they need to do a modification, it would certainly help us throughout the process. The last thing is, I don't think the two-minute limitation today on public comment really served us well. I wanted, I would have wanted to have seen more. This is, and I understand the Chair's interest in expediency. I'm completely there. I'm a maniac when it comes to being efficient with the use of our time, but I think, I'm worried about a trend away from giving the public an adequate amount of time to make their points, particularly when there's eight people to speak. When there's 30 or 40 or 50, I see a very compelling reason to try to urge people to be more focused and succinct. But in this particular case, it was the public's comments that helped us understand the project and its implications better. And so hopefully, when we have this level of input, we can be a skosh more flexible on the time.
Thank you, Mr. Justice. I will say that, sitting in this seat, what we try to do, or what I try to do, is to be equally fair in terms of time. And so, I do have to say that it is a challenge because there are people, neighbors, et cetera, who you really want to have, have more time, and it makes it difficult. And so, I can bleed out an extra 30 seconds or something, but it just, it is a tough, it is a tough call on time. And that's why yielding time becomes a very good tool in terms of consolidating, you know, if you have a large piece. The other thing I find is that if you're reading something, you tend to go a lot slower with your points than if you've got them bulleted out and you're talking. So I, you know, it's not an oversight on my part. I just need to have everybody know, though, that my job is to run a fair meeting. And so, I try to do that as much as possible. So, but I do agree with Mr. Justice very strongly that, I wish I had more time, that I could just say, here, take it all. Because it is important, and it's extremely important to a neighbor. It absolutely is. So that being said, I'll go to Ms. Lott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with just about all of the comments that have been made. And overall, looking at the building, I think it's a nice building. But I certainly also understand the neighbors' dismay at finding that, although there were some comments about, gee, I'm glad to see that it was going to be developed because of other issues there, that it is going to be so massive in their view. I was wondering, well, one of the things I hope the applicant would look at is making the light well, the forward light well, larger. It is surrounded by the larger units, and it seems to me that little square footage could be taken off of that, not only for the building next door, but for their outdoor living space, which is really at the bottom of a well right now. I like the setbacks in the front. I appreciate the applicant drawing that line and wonder if the possibility might be to have one parking space in the front, using the rest for landscaping so that you don't see it, and the other parking space in the back. Because in the larger setback, that's a possibility. That's what I would like to see. Okay. And I guess those are my additional comments. I'm just going to throw a little bit of history in here for, Madam Chair, I understand your difficulty with, you know, having so many people who want to speak. And time limits on people speaking came after I had made a number of trips to Washington, DC to testify every time for about $1 million in federal funds for dredging of the harbor. I got 30 seconds. And so, two minutes seemed like a lot. But I agree with Mr. Justice, you know, when there are not very many people that want to speak, if possible, to allow a little more time, a little more flexibility.
Well, we'll remind the next chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Because there's just two weeks left. All right. At least, I think there is. It could be a few more, but we'll see how it goes. And my comments don't differ a lot. I'm in support of a continuation. I really am curious about what happens to these offices as people mature in their lives and go on and don't want to have to move. But in saying that I support a continuation for some redesign to eliminate setbacks, I'm also going to encourage you to continue to work with your neighbor. Because I really think that, I really think, well, I know from my own experience, design is problem-solving. And we've all heard it many times, but it really is. And I think the problem can be solved. I really do. A little here and a little there, and it adds up to a lot very quickly, whether you're adding or subtracting or however you're moving things. But I really believe that this is an opportunity to really have a very good solution, particularly, well, to all sides of the project. And I'll look forward to that. And also to the parking, to the cars not being in the front. There's another opportunity somehow, and that's the problem-solving part. So I will fully support a continuation, if that is your desire. Oh, yes. Let's see. Ms. Jacobs, and then Mr. Thompson and Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to add one thought on the live-work element. Commissioner White touched upon it, and I did not because it's only marginally pertinent to this project as we're moving it into continuation. But it has been an issue that we've accommodated requests for live-work, and we really don't know how they're doing, is the expected benefit for the community of a zero commute happening. If someone has a business and they hire an employee and that employee is going to take up space on the street to park, how does that work out? We are test-piloting this idea, and we don't have a lot of data back on how it's working. And yet, we still get applications for them and give them the benefit of the doubt. And it might make a good topic for a status report or a lunchwork session. And one that I would like to eventually hear back on is, in the Funk Zone, it's a project that's currently under construction. It's, I want to say Yanana Lee and, yes, exactly. And it's a lovely design, and we were, we were pretty direct in the developer of that project. And we asked them to include in the CCNRs that there be public hours that these offices would keep, that the door would be open to the public, and these are storefronts, they're right on the street, to see if that might be a way of guaranteeing that they don't just turn into extra file storage or the teenager's bedroom or a convenient sublet. So I would like to see, as time goes on, a report back or a discussion item about live-work. Because what the city is giving as a benefit to these is, in some ways, we're giving some consideration on parking and on the designation of the building as mixed-use rather than entirely commercial or entirely residential. So there's a definite benefit to the applicant, and the city is anticipating a benefit back to the public, but we don't have a very concrete idea of how that's really working and how we could do it better. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Justice?
Thank you. I would like to move this on at this point. Oh, Mr. White has a comment. I'm sorry.
Well, so did Mr. Thompson.
I was just thinking it's-
Mr. Thompson and Ms. Lott.
I would hope we could get from staff, presuming a motion for continuance comes forward, whether it's a time certain, I mean, a date certain, or whether we need to do that so we can make the appropriate motion and keep this on its track.
Okay. One second. I need to come down this side real quick. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to comment to Commissioner White's earlier comments about CCNRs as an enforcement tool. CCNRs are only viable if you have an aggressive and active homeowners' association. And my experience over the years with various CCNRs and associations has been very mixed. Some are totally lax, other ones are overly aggressive. But the bottom line is, the city has nothing to do with enforcing CCNRs. So if we want to expect something to do with a project that will be enforced by an association through CCNRs, it won't happen. And if, we really want it to be- And if we really want it to be something that should be enforced, that has to be in conditions of approval, or a conditional use permit, or some way that the city can enforce what we want to have happen, so don't bet that CCNRs are going to cause something to happen over the life of a project.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I also would be interested in a report back on how these are working out, and I just want to remind staff of El Zokolo, which I believe was the first that was approved. It's on the chairs at the freeway, way down there at the end. Now, that one may have some housing authority involvement, and so there, and I believe it has continued to be truly live-work space, but it's one of the other ones that should be looked at.
Also, one of the markers we have for businesses is a business license. It shouldn't even be that hard to check out. You know, it doesn't mean you can't have a business license and have somebody sleep in your room, but at the same time, at least, it's sort of a direction to go in. All right. So back to the time certain of Mr. Justice.
Madam Chair, this project, before it comes back to the commission, will probably have to go back to ABR if there are going to be major design changes. And it sounds like the type of design change that the planning commission are looking for aren't little minor things, or a little bit more substantive. So I would say that we wouldn't do a time certain. We'd have to go back to, we'd have to go back to ABR first, and then, for their comments, and then have it come back.
Thanks. All right. Any last words? A motion? Mr. Justice?
Madam Chair, I move we continue this project to a time to be determined by staff based upon the timing of the ABR review.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Mr. White?
Madam Chair, I had, the reason I turned off my light before is because I had forgotten what I wanted to say.
Oh, okay.
But, and I wanted to speak to the folks out there who sent these longer letters. Even if you email those to our staff at 10 o'clock this morning, or, you know, in the morning today, it's amazing that we have a very efficient staff who will forward those emails to us. So at least it might give us an hour's heads-up somewhere along the line to get a real chance to read those things. So make use of the miracles of the modern age to compensate a little bit for some of the glitches that occur. But it would give us a chance to digest your very thoughtful letters.
Preferably the day before.
Of course.
So we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next on our agenda, thank you, folks, for coming, and we'll look forward to working with the neighbors. Thanks. So this brings us to our administrative agenda. Committee and liaison reports, anyone? Ms. Lodge, and then Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, there was one little item from the last downtown parking committee meeting that I wanted to mention that I think would be of interest to the commission, or at least because of declining revenues, they've been, the parking committee has been looking at ways of perhaps leasing out or renting out the facilities. And they looked at the possibility of renting out the top floors of the parking structures as a site for events of one kind or another. Well, the report back was that people per square foot weigh more than cars do, and it could conceivably be damage to the garage if they did that.
Well, maybe if they were dancing.
Especially when they're dancing, right.
All right. Thank you. Very interesting. Maybe small weddings. Oh, go ahead. Ms. Jacobs?
Photo opportunities. I have a question in there about that, Ms. Lodge. Did anyone consider renting out space to a car leasing, or not car leasing, a car-sharing enterprise such as Zoom Car, or some of the other kinds of uses besides events?
I think they've been looking pretty much at everything, and I think that is more a question of this company out there that wants to bring that service to Santa Barbara. But I did not hear anything, you know.
Taxi companies, I mean, any kind of alternative transportation that can make use of that space and provide revenue would be worth looking at.
Good suggestion. I'll pass it on.
And then I had a, I was at the, it's not a liaison report so much, as something out in the community. I was at the Mesa Town Hall meeting last night, as was Ms. Larson. Ms. Larson was there as an official representative of the commission. I was just there to listen, because Ms. Larson has encouraged us all to go and see the Mesa Town Hall in action, and that's what I went to see, and I was very impressed. I was impressed with the depth of background and knowledge of the audience of the neighbors. I was impressed with the quality of their questions. I was very pleased with their listening and conversation with the presenters. All in all, it was a very productive and model event in terms of what a town hall meeting can be. And so first, I compliment, hats off, to the Mesa and its organizers, and other communities, neighborhoods could do this too. It's true, they have an Energizer bunny, even dubbed a local hero in The Independent. You'll remember her name. But the, it was a very good experience, and I would encourage commissioners to attend one of those town hall meetings when you get a chance, to see how well-informed the public is and how good the participation is.
It's Alice San Andreas Kaleha, and she is very, very, very much working on the Mesa and with the Mesa. So how fortunate.
But I would point out, she got the director of Parks and Rec, yourself, Mr. Pritchett from Transportation and Circulation. There were representatives there from many different professions as part of the panel. It was so well-organized.
There was even a mediator.
There was a mediator. There was, it was good.
Yeah. She had a mediator, she had a moderator, she had guest speakers. I didn't have to say anything. It was all happening. It was very interesting. And I will say that it's very difficult to say no to her. She really, she really gets in there and works, so. And there is a Mesa website even that has the Mesa plan on it, if you go and look at it. And I believe it's rmesanneighborhood.com, because I go there occasionally just to check and see what's happening. Okay. And Mr. White?
Well, you, I certainly wouldn't want to be borrowing any of your thunder, but it is First Thursday tonight, Madam Chair.
I was going to say that, because the, I even checked it out this time. That's okay.
All right. I'll stop there, and you can tell us about it more.
I will, right after I give the out-of-order staff hearing liaison report as my, as my ending little thing today, which was from Susan Rudin, who said, oh, wait, we do have the draft minutes. That's right. Thank you, Addison. Couldn't do it without you. The staff hearing liaison officer reported that nothing monumental happened at the meeting. Everything was minimal, appropriate, and including a fire-damaged home up near where I live, on Litchfield, which got its little porch enclosure for the front as a small mod. So that was, that was the meeting. We can move on now to our minutes. And that's the minutes, the draft minutes of September 24, 2009. I need a motion, please.
Continue that till.
Continue, thank you. And a second?
Continue it till the next meeting?
Yes, we have a motion for Mr. White, a second by Mr. Bartlett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now, we have a, I need a motion to approve the minutes as corrected, which were very minor corrections, mostly spelling, of October 22, 2009, moved by Mr. White.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lodge. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Madam Chair, I will abstain, as I was absent at that meeting.
Oh, thank you very much.
Likewise.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Justice and Ms. Jacobs. And so motion carries. And it is First Thursday, and I understand that there are some special goings-on at the Museum of Art, and also that the shops across the street there, in the area of Victoria Court, Annapamoo area, are, some of them are staying open much later tonight. So do wander up and around.
There will also be a reception at Design Within Reach, I think, of our local architect, luminary Barton Myers.
Oh, great.
For people who are interested in our design community.
Thank you. And Mr. Vincent?
Madam Chair, before the commission adjourns today, I do want to explain one more point about the noticing issue that came up and is exemplified by this particular application, or the one that we had. I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak specifically to that application, but the staff takes the interested parties list very seriously, and they try to make every effort to be sure to get information to interested parties when they ask to be on the list. In this particular case, and I guess maybe I do want to speak to this as an example of how things can happen, even with those best intentions, the mailing list for this particular meeting went out on November 16. That was because the typical timing for, the notice for these meetings, 10 days in advance. The typical timing for this meeting would have fallen on the Thursday before this meeting, which was Thanksgiving. And so that, the scheduling for this, I guess it wasn't Thanksgiving, it would have, it was pushed forward. There was just a series of circumstances that all occurred that coincidentally left this particular person without receiving the written mailed 10-day notice. In this particular situation, we as staff found out about that yesterday morning. And as you saw, there are other people who had rearranged their schedules and had made their own arrangements to show up to this meeting. We don't take it lightly about when someone misses notice. But at the same time, you, the other members of the public, the applicant, and staff have all made their own plans to have, to attend this hearing and make their comments. So the point I want to make is, for those members of the public who are still watching, as well as for the commission, is to understand that staff is making every effort to get this notice to these people. We are, there are some issues regarding the assessor role and using that as the noticing address. And if a person out there has an interest in projects or a parcel near them, I suggest that you contact, either check with the assessor's office as to what address is being used for your address, or to sign up as an interested party with the city and give a new address so that you're sure to get the notice.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. I want to ask a real quick question regarding what we're taking home with us, which is the EIR for the final draft for the Sandman. And it says, Volume 1 on the cover. Is there a Volume 2?
And I'm sure, I believe Volume 2 is the technical appendices, but I, which would be a lot of the different studies and things, I, I'm pretty sure, I think Julie was going to make.
I just want to make sure we're not missing something that we have to have.
I don't think so, but I'll.
Okay. Thanks for checking.
That's true, it is online.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Okay. All right. Well, with that, there being no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.